We will call the January 7th meeting of the Manhattan City Commission meeting to order. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please follow me.
(inaudible)
Well, it's probably fitting to start off the new year with a great proclamation. We've got a lot of great folks here to receive it. This is for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration and Day of Service. So as everybody knows, in this town, we take great pride in the celebrations that we have for Dr. King. We have Juneteenth, which helps do that as well when we get closer to the summertime. But in the meantime, we're going to do this great celebration tonight. And I'd ask all of those involved to please come forward and go make this proclamation.
Whereas January 20th, 2020 marks observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday and Service Days, established by Public Law Number 98-144 in 1983. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. It is appropriate for the City of Manhattan to support a community celebration and day of service in observance of the King Holiday and day of service honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now therefore I, Michael L. Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim January 18th through the 20th, 2020, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration and Day of Service in Manhattan, Kansas, and urge all people to join and pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and apply his life teachings of service to inspire others to serve and remember his spirit of community.
Sure. I can just hold it? Okay. Um, well, we appreciate so much the city recognizing this important holiday, and we always love the community support that we have on our various events where we join together to celebrate and remember and continue the work of Dr. King in our community. This year will be kicking off on Saturday, January 18th at 2:00, right here at the Peace Memorial Auditorium with our community celebration. And we will have a speaker, Lim Shepard, who will be speaking on the Harlem Renaissance and the Kansas contributions that were made by local artists. So we're really excited about that presentation. We will also be presenting a local award to someone who embodies the spirit of Martin Luther King Jr. here in our community, as well as honoring students who won the art and writing contest. So they had a theme on one of MLK's quotes, and we had over 100 submissions. So it's always exciting to recognize those kids. And then on Sunday morning, we encourage people to celebrate at their various congregations, and then Monday morning, we have a prayer breakfast at the Four Points Sheraton at 8:00 a.m.
That's it. All right. Thank you. (applause) Yes, that's a good idea.
Am I supposed to hold this?
Yep.
Okay.
Next again. Well, tonight's a little bit different, so we have a little different lineup on how we'll go through the business. But we'll first have public comment, then we'll have commissioner comments, then we'll do a little piece called "Old Business" for the consent agenda. Then we'll have a change where we'll swear in the new commissioners, and then we'll have Mayor Protam Reddy do the second part of the consent agenda, and then we'll move to the general agenda after that. So we don't want to confuse you too much, but we have a special meeting tonight. So item three is public comment, and at this time, we'd ask anyone in the public who has any comment at all, we'd ask you not to comment on consent agenda or general agenda items because there'll be an opportunity for that later. So any item that's not on those two pieces of business, please come forward. We just ask you to state your name and where you live, and there's a place to sign up on the dais there, and we'd love to hear from you. So at this time, anyone wishing to make public comment, please come forward.
Okay. Good evening, and congratulations to our newly elected officials, and thank you, all of you, for having helped my effort, our effort, at Kansas State University, the Community Solutions to Affordable Housing. Over the past two years, with support from the Kansas Health Foundation, we have been able to identify through many, many community conversations, priority areas that this town wants to look at in order to improve the quality, safety, and affordability of housing in our town. And I just want to use this opportunity to share with you our thanks and a copy of our two-year report. Our project is finished as far as Kansas Health Foundation funding is concerned, but we have discovered through developing coalitions with persons interested in workforce housing, persons interested in routineized rental property inspection, persons interested in targeting specific neighborhoods for improvement and revitalization, that there are new coalitions forming in this town that have a vital interest and will continue presenting in this forum and in others what their ideas are. Many of these ideas are policy-based, but also they are innovation-based and very creative. So we look forward to sharing you news of these movements, and I'll give a copy of this to someone who can share it with you later. We really are deeply grateful for the attention that we have gotten from city staff, the assistants, and every time we've come to this commission to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the Secretary with the Flint Hills Human Rights Project. I would like to begin to thank either Jared McKee and Michael Dodson for your service here. We do appreciate it. I would especially like to thank Jared. He has been instrumental help with LGBTQ issues, the first openly gay mayor, or not mayor, commissioner here in Manhattan, and we greatly appreciate all your service here. And I would like to ask you, as a commission here, and as you accept new commissioners onto your board, just to please make LGBTQ issues a priority going forward and make sure we continue on the progress that we've made. Thank you for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? All right. If not, we'll close the public comment period and move to item four, which is commissioner comments. We'll start with Linda.
You know, I always think that whenever there's a Martin Luther King, anything, I need to come down and be with you all. Been a part of it for so many years. But, so I'm pleased that, to have, that the city has had the opportunity to recognize the Martin Luther King event here, and, or the day and the week or whatever, and all of the events that you've planned, and I'm looking forward to attending them. So I'd also just like to thank from personally Jared McKee and Mike Dodson for their service on the commission. Jared was a two-year person, and Mike, of course, was four. But it's been great to get to know them. We all bring different perspectives and views to our commission role, and it's all turned out well. I think Manhattan is a better community because we have come together and had some of these discussions, and so just want to express appreciation to them. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and use this time to kind of give my closing remarks. I try to keep them shorter, but as I was writing them, I, you're going to have to listen to me rant one more time. I never know, who knows if I'll ever have a platform like this again, and so I want to use this time to talk about something I think is really important. So first and foremost, I just want to say it's been an absolute privilege to serve with these four on the commission. Mayor Dodson, Wyn Butler, they spent years serving our country in the U.S. Army, climbing their ranks where they managed thousands, hundreds of people and budgets much larger than that of the cities. Commissioner Morris, who in my opinion is as much of a staple of this community as Bill Snyder is. There are very few people in this town who don't know who Linda is, and she is regularly and always at every meeting advocating for your interests and the interests of this community, and I think that's really special. She's been an advocate for her community and her neighborhood for years, and I think that's amazing. And then Commissioner Reddy, who has built her career investing in the talents of our youth, and particularly serving youth and underserved communities. Also in her spare time, she's running for U.S. Senate, so she's a busy lady. I just, I think she's a perfect example of the American dream and why it's so important and how immigrants make our cities and our communities and our country so much stronger. So to say two years ago, when I first got set on this commission, that it was kind of intimidating to be around all of these accomplished people would be an understatement. I was really intimidated, right? But I think during that time, they've taught me a great deal, and I've taught them something too. So one kind of big point that I want to make with this kind of comment is, all these commissioners on this dais attend a lot of meetings, more than just the meetings that we do on Tuesday night. And really early on, when I was going to these meetings, it became quite evident to me that at 99% of these meetings, I was going to be by far the youngest person in the room, by far the youngest person in the room. And so it got me thinking a lot of why that was. Why are more young people not elected to public office? Why are more young people not a part of the bodies of these organizations that I'm meeting with? And why are 20-somethings largely left out of these conversations? And so I thought about that a lot, and you know, economic and structural issues play into it, but that can't be the whole reason, right? I'm sitting here, and I'm fairly poor, so I found a way, but why is that? And I had a few experiences during my tenure on the commission that I think illustrated why it is, and I'll give you a couple here. So first, when I first elected, the Manhattan Mercury often, when they would write about me, would put my age behind my name. So they would say, Jared McKee, comma, 25, comma. They would also reference my fellow commissioners, and they never put their age in the newspaper. Now, I don't think the Mercury intended any malice whatsoever when they did this, but it was just kind of how it was. Also, when I tend to meet people for the first time, I'll say something along the lines of, hi, my name's Jared McKee, and more than 75% of the time, people say, oh, wow, oh, wow, you're a city commissioner, right? Oh, wow. And I'm like, yeah, I'm not Jared McKee. And I would like to think that they're like very surprised by my beauty or something of that nature, but I don't think that's why it is, right? I think it's their surprise of how young I am. I think a lot of people knew I was young, but they were thinking like 35 to 40, a couple kids young, not this kid's ink on his diploma is still wet young. And so just little things like that. Then one more thing, I went to the Parks and Rec Board meeting one time where they were discussing the Warner Park Master Plan with the disc golf, and we all know that was a big issue here. And I went to that meeting because I wanted to see how the board interacted and kind of hear the public comment. I was standing way in the back in the city auditorium, not really talking to anybody. I just wanted to be there to listen. And when the board was about to speak, Ed Kleemack, who's the chair, kind of gestured to the back of the room and said to the board, make sure that you fully describe your position because we have a city commissioner in attendance, and he gestured back at me. And so I had probably had about three dozen people turn around and all make eye contact with me for about a minute, and then kept looking for the city commissioner because they're like, it can't be him, right? Like, that's not, that's not it. And so just little experiences like that. Again, I don't think anybody intended any malice when they did any of these things, but I think it does illustrate a point that we have this kind of subconscious assumption sometimes that a young person isn't capable or maybe prepared to hold a position of leadership or maybe isn't experienced enough to be an authority on an issue. And when we make that assumption, it's very easy for us to forget about including them in our bodies to help us make decisions. I also think that unfortunately in this community, there's an underlying notion that young people are just going to leave, and so why involve them? Why should they have as much of a say as I have when I own property or I've been a member of this community for longer? And if you don't believe me, there are several city commission meetings where I can point to you, and that was things that were referenced all the time during public comment. So I just, a couple reminders that I wanted to put in here. First and foremost, 20-somethings power the City of Manhattan's economy, right? Period, full stop. City Manhattan would be very, very different if it wasn't for all those young people who decided to go to K-State, go to Manhattan Technical College, and then even stay in this community to start their experience. I also am of the belief that whether someone's lived here for four years, 10 years, or their whole life, that should make no difference in how seriously we consider their needs and their desire or their positions on issues, right? Like, just because you've only lived here for one year doesn't mean that you are any less of a citizen of the City of Manhattan than someone who's lived here their whole life. Because if we take that notion that they're not as important, what that leads to is us attending a meeting a week later, wondering why we can't keep young people in this community and why we can't keep graduates from K-State at this community. It's an ever-evolving problem that never stops. So the main thing that I want to tell you is, don't ever think of me as special, right? I got elected young, 25 years old, but I'm not special. I just happen to be the loudest person, and that got me to where I was. But there are so many 20-somethings in this town that are so much smarter than I am, more capable than I am, and you need to make sure that those people are a part of your organizations. So I'm going to wrap this up with how I started it and about the commission learning from each other. When I say that I learned from them and I hope they learned from me, it wasn't us teaching each other subjects, right? It was rather us sharing our life experiences and how those things affected our lives. I don't know what it's like to live on a fixed income in retirement, but it's important for me to understand that when I'm voting on a mill increase. I don't know what it's like to be burdened with medical costs that are ever skyrocketing, right? Because I've been fortunate. I don't know what it's like to teach a classroom full of students and not have enough resources. I don't understand those things, but I've been able to learn more about them because of this body. But on the flip side of that, when you don't include young people in your organizations and your conversations, you won't understand what it's like to pay $700 a month in student loan debt. I'm a first-generation college student, have $50,000 in student loan debt, pay $700 a month. Every life decision I make involves my student loan debt. It's the first thing I have to think about, right? You're going to miss that perspective. You won't hear what it's like to not only, I have many friends that just had children that are not only struggling to find affordable childcare, but to find childcare, period. Just find anybody. And they don't have the convenience for one of them to be able to stay home because we live in an economy that demands that both of them work. If you don't include young people, you might not be able to understand what it feels like to be the first generation in a century who will not grow up to be as wealthy as your parents are, right? Like, those things have impacts on the policy decisions that we make up here. And so my challenge to all of you is to go to your organization and look around, do you have enough 20-somethings involved? And if you don't, actively recruit them. Just don't say, we welcome you. Actively recruit them, because the every minute that they're not a part of your organizations is a minute that your organization is lesser, right? Because you are missing a vital and needed resource. And in light of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, also desperately find young people of color because they are almost always left out of the conversation. It's just such an important thing. So I didn't mean to rant there, but again, don't think of me as special because I'm not special. Find more people who are like me because they are out there and they're willing to engage on these issues and be a part of this community. And the minute that we start doing a better job of engaging them, we'll stop having meetings wondering why we can't keep people here. And so again, I just want to thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for this whole thing. It's been amazing, and I'm a better human being because I was a part of this, so thank you.
Maybe all those who are going to join the Army on Monday could raise their hand. Isn't that something?
We argued a lot up here, but I think in a couple of weeks, I'm going to be missing these people a lot. They didn't, they weren't, they're not going to yell at me as much as I'm probably going to get here pretty soon, so.
Well, one of the things I wanted to talk about, I'll come back to this in just a minute, but we had a legislative session at lunchtime today, and we went on for about two hours and found it very helpful. We do this periodically where we have our local representatives from both the House and the Senate in Topeka come in, and we provide them with kind of an overview of the city and some of the challenges we're facing. And then we have a legislative agenda that we try to advance, and it has probably about 15 things on there. We've got a top 10, and then we've got some other things that we're concerned about. But you know, when you present things to people, you want to keep the number down a little bit so it's manageable. But we did that for two hours today, and it was quite productive. We worry a little bit because we are very like-minded. That is, we've got to have a contingent that is, has enough power up in Topeka so that we can get movement on some of these issues. But I'd like Ron to kind of describe maybe those top 10 issues just in summary form so that you can hear some of the things the city's been interested in for probably the past three or four years.
Thank you, Mayor. It was good to have our local delegation with us, that we just kind of updated them on some of our community projects, some of those tied into active legislative issues and some didn't. But we wanted them to be aware of some of the things that we were doing in the community in order to advance, you know, our opportunities. One of the things that, one of our highest priorities is an opportunity to develop bioscience districts, and so this is something that's been kind of established in previous legislation, and we think it's an opportunity when we have areas around NBAF or other communities have STEM and other science and engineering and different types of innovation districts that they will be able to establish these districts and be able to draw from some of the income tax on new jobs that are created that could, some of that money can go back into companies to invest and build new laboratories, which is very expensive, and/or go towards some of our infrastructure needs. Infrastructure is, was a category in itself, and it covers a lot of things, anywhere from transportation. We mentioned support for the Kansas Department of Transportation, 10-year highway plan and roads program, and so it's an area that is needed nationally for growth and support and maintenance. Obviously, that's an area that we've had a lot of attention on with our own .2 cent sales tax. So not only in transportation, but also in our water and wastewater and stormwater utilities that feed into that. Another item is an item that's, an issue that's come up the last couple of years. It's called alternative valuation theory, and that's where the big-box stores primarily are arguing their value of their stores should be perceived as if though it was vacant, and their property taxes should be such as that. Well, if we all did that, there wouldn't be very many people in this community, either in empty houses or empty stores. So we don't think that's a very good methodology and certainly one that favors one group over another. So we certainly would like to see the legislation active in that. The governor had a tax advisory council that met, and in one of the recommendations is to restore our local abvolorm tax reduction funds. So this has been missing for about 18 years since they provided any of these funds, and it was designed as the state sharing some of the sales tax revenue that they get in order so localities could keep some of their property taxes down. And so we're hopeful that the legislature can bring some of those funds back because we are operating under a property tax lid. That lid doesn't have a lot of exemptions. It does exempt police and fire, but things like health insurance that we don't really have any control over those costs of increasing. And so it, as a city that has some growth needs, it makes things more difficult for us. So those are really the, some of the main areas we're looking at. We had some secondary issues as well, but it, we will have a draft of the legislative platform for the city on our website, so you'll be able to look at it there as well.
Well, my remarks, I think many of you have heard before. I'm not going to change them a lot just because of the occasion, but I really appreciate this opportunity to serve Manhattan and the people of Manhattan. This is something that my mom and dad did when they were young. They did it for most of their lives, and my dad is 96, and he's still been asked to come down, straighten out the city council, so it never ends. The most rewarding part of this has been the association I've had with people, so I want to take some time not to thank individuals, but to thank them as categories because there's simply not enough time to go through all the individuals I've had a chance to touch with. And I have to thank Diane, who's not here tonight. She's attending our annual HOA meeting, which ought to be a raucous affair, so I'm probably better served to be here. The city commissioners has been mentioned. I mean, we're, we all come from different backgrounds. We see the world in slightly different ways, but at the end of the day, we do the city's business, we have great discussions, and we come out as friends. I don't think there's ever been an ugly word uttered about any, between any of us, and that's a remarkable thing for the community. Our local legislators, I mentioned earlier, are a terrific bunch, doing the best they can to support us. They're working against some real headwinds up in Topeka, but nonetheless, they're very hard-working people. The city staff and the department heads and all those in those departments, if you ever get a chance to come in and walk through City Hall and chat with those people, we've got some folks who really work very, very hard, and so we ought to be extremely proud of all of those people who do the city's business on a day-to-day basis. And you know, when the snow falls, when the wind blows, when the creek comes up, there's always somebody out there doing this work. When the fire bell goes off, when the sirens go off, we have the RCPD or our fire department, EMTs, and everybody's responding. There's a planning cell that goes to work, largely invisible to many people, but this city does it very, very well, particularly during the flooding episode that we had, and managed that so well along with the county and the state and some, from the federal government. That was, that emergency operations center was really well-done in a very short period of time. We've got a lot of people who are largely invisible, who serve on our boards and committees that assist the city commission. We talked about that at the meeting at 5:30. I think we have 32 boards and commissions that look across the broad spectrum of needs for the community, and without them, the city wouldn't run very well and wouldn't do as good a job as representing all the people of Manhattan. We've got volunteers. Many of you are also volunteers, and you know, when you go out to these places, whether it's the breadbasket or something else, to support, you see all kinds of wonderful people teaming up to serve those people that are in need from time to time or perhaps over the longer term. Great civic groups, great cooperation among all of them. One of the things we enjoy here is great partnerships, and I've talked about kind of the internal partnerships that we have with the Chamber of Commerce, the neighborhood groups, these same civic organizations, Kansas State University, Fort Riley, and then the schools. I mean, we, you don't see this too often, but the kind of reciprocity we have among all these groups is extraordinary. And we've had Usha and Linda, and I think Jared as well, participate in Town Gown, and you know, we're either number one or number two. And you know, we're either number one or number two all the time across the nation. So we ought to be very proud of those associations and the reputation it brings to Manhattan, Kansas and to our university. We also have great potential. You know, if you look out at other communities across Kansas and maybe even across the nation, they would be very envious of the kinds of things that we have now that bode very well for our future. You know, we can start with NBAF. We can talk about our airport. I don't, I guess we can announce this now, but we're, we now have gone from a record last year in 18 of 70,000 flights, 70,000 passengers. And this, this year now at 19, we're at 77,000. We'll probably get a little bit more when they complete the audit. So this is a tremendous growth and this is rather unique for municipal airports. And it's been due to the hard work of our airport manager and a lot of other people to make that happen. We have a food science corridor that runs arguably from Salina through Manhattan, Manhattan being a major hub of this, of this endeavor, going all the way to probably St. Louis. So there's a lot of opportunity there, a lot of science, and we're going to take advantage of that. KSU and the foundation have some great plans for expansion of the North Campus Corridor. That's also enabled by some of the work that the Chamber of Commerce is doing along with the city to help that. Great things going on in Aggieville, just getting started. And I think one of the things that ought to be top of all our minds is how we do economic development. We've got a lot of people pulling on the same rope. A lot of planning effort is going on right now, but with all of these potentials sitting out there, I think we ought to be very comfortable about where we're going. We just have to recognize where we are and keep working hard to make it happen. Manhattan's a great city. You know, a lot of us had choices about where we go when they, when we retire and things like this. We made a choice to come to Manhattan and have been richly rewarded by doing that. And I think we can be assured of having a great future here in Manhattan. We've got challenges. You know, we're in a little bit of a flat spot right now, but as I think most people realize, when you're doing, whether you're in business or in private life, you've got to take some chances, you've got to do risk reward analysis, and you've got to make investments. And the people that have come before us have made great investments. I think this sitting commission has made great investments in the future and I think we'll see them realized. And the new commission will do the same thing of guiding Manhattan for the next several years. So with that, I just want to thank everybody. Been a great experience for me and I'm looking forward to future opportunities to serve. There's a lot of folks out here that I think can benefit from some, one more person to help pull on the rope, so I'm certainly willing to do that. So thank you very much. I appreciate my service. So we'll now move to consent agenda, old business. And there are three items on the consent agenda for old business. These consent agenda items are items that have been previously considered by the commission or considered administrative in nature. So it's also true that any commissioner can take one of those items for further discussion at this time or else move them into the general agenda category. So just ask at this time if there are any items that are for further discussion. Are there any items on this consent agenda, old business, that the public wishes to comment Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the commission and ask for a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. And now we'll move to the reorganization portion. And we either need a ringmaster, are you going to do this, Ron?
Well, I'll introduce city clerk Brenda Wolf, who will ask the elected, newly-elected commissioners to join her at the podium for swearing in.
Good.
Yeah, man. If you guys want to step down, they'll step up.
Do you want to have the families come? Yeah, have the families come forward, absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
I swear.
I solemnly swear.
I idol support.
I idol support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Manhattan.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
I'm city commissioner.
I'm city commissioner.
I'm the city of Manhattan.
I'm the city of Manhattan.
But it's on.
We'll see you. It's organized here. Can I have my chair? This is not functioning very well.
Yeah, this one's better.
I would like to ask the commission for nominations for mayor.
Okay, I move that Commissioner Usha Ready be appointed to serve as mayor until the first working Tuesday of January 2021.
Second?
I second the motion.
Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Commissioner Ready for the position of mayor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would like, no, Mayor Ready.
Oh, I would like to ask the commission for nominations for mayor pro temp.
I move that Commissioner Wen Butler be appointed to serve as the mayor pro temp until the first working day in two, uh, working Tuesday of January 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Commissioner Butler for the position of mayor pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would like, no, Mayor Ready.
Oh, I would like to ask the commission for nominations for mayor pro temp.
I move that Commissioner Wen Butler be appointed to serve as the mayor pro temp until the first working day in two, uh, working Tuesday of January 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Commissioner Butler for the position of mayor pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think the city is better because of you. You have done so much as far as being a collaborative leader, your skills and your partnership mannerisms, professionalism, and just being, bringing a source of wisdom to the city chambers of, is very, well, it worked well for me. And I think it benefited all of us in the long run, too. I wasn't sure what to expect when I thought, oh, a general is going to be here, what do we have to do? But then we realized there was just so much about you that we didn't know and I think we worked really, really well together. And you've become a great friend for me as well as Diane. Thank you.
Well, I can see myself now taking this out at home. I don't think this is going to work, but I deeply appreciate this, it's very significant. Thank you very much and thanks for the opportunity to work with you. I really appreciated that. I'll be there to help you in the future, too.
Likewise, on behalf of the city staff and city administration and the community, we've put together a collage of pictures for you that kind of tries to cover some of the gambit of your experiences as mayor, which again, we appreciate your little more than four and a half years of service. So you know, the legislature extended your service whether you wanted to or not, but so two mayor's holiday parades as mayor and we certainly appreciate your leadership during your term as mayor and we especially appreciate Diane being able to support you in that effort and just want to show a little bit about that. Thank you so much.
I was trying to figure out who this guy is with the gray hair. You know, this is like when you go to the class reunion after about 30, 40 years and you're looking at everybody and say, what in the heck? I don't know any of them. So did I have brown here when I came on the question?
Maybe.
Maybe I did. But again, as I said up there, this has been, this has been terrific for me, not only working with the other commissioners, but also working with Ron and the staff. I mean, as a city, we couldn't ask for better people. They're hardworking, they try to do the best for the long term and they interact really well with citizens across the city. So thanks very much, Ron, appreciate it.
So Commissioner McKee, or now Jared McKee. Jared, you've been a wonderful friend. We've known each other even before you started to join the city commission. You're politically, you were always politically engaged. I think not only regardless of your age, your energy, your enthusiasm and your breadth of knowledge, just from your experience at Civic Plus, as well as all of your life experiences, being, having to pay off student debt and all of these things, that added to the dimensions when we came to our city budget conversations, as well as your technology knowledge and just your outreach to areas we couldn't always be at. So thank you for the dialogue, the conversation, your job is not done. I'm sure you're going to run for something again in the near future and you already have my vote. So thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All I, one thing that I wanted to mention earlier is when you run for office, they don't actually tell you how hard it is to cut the ribbon at ribbon cutting ceremonies. I only got to do one of those and that's probably, I still have the ribbon as a keepsake because a bunch of news there and it took about five takes for me to actually get the ribbon cut. So yeah, just little things like that have made this experience all worthwhile. It's gritty and it's not very fancy or, and it requires a lot of hard work, but all the people you get to work with make it worth it, so.
And Jared, on behalf of the city staff and the community, we just appreciate your energy that you brought to the position and the perspective and so I so appreciated your comments tonight. And we managed to find a few photos that reflect some of that and we hope you enjoy that. And I, you probably can't take this in your backpack that you're doing, so, but thank you so much for all that you did for us. And we have one little other item for you. One of the things that Commissioner McKee encouraged us to do is to maybe have a new city flag design. And so he was one of the primary instigators of that, that event and that effort and it led to a new city flag. So we wanted you to have your own city flag to remember us for.
For the record, I just want to say that I came to one briefing session and said that I watched a TED Talk of what's wrong with city flags and it seemed that our current city flag had a lot of those issues. And then three weeks later, I think I got a call from the Manhattan Mercury that was like, tell us about your city flag initiative, Jared. Like people are really excited about this. And I was like, what initiative? I'm very confused by your question. So again, be careful what you say because things will happen because we have a hard working city staff that moves on things like that very quickly. But I'm proud of our new city flag and I will proudly display this and hang it up. So thank you again for everything.
Okay. I'll make my comments?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to make a few comments before we go on to the consent agenda again. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Dodson and Commissioner McKee for their service on the city commission. We all worked very well together and I know you will continue to serve in other capacities and once a public servant, always a public servant. And you know, one of the best things about this city commission, when Mike and Jared were here, out of a body of five, I believe we were the most diverse city commission. And I hesitate to say just in Kansas, I would think in the nation. We covered different religions, different parties, gender, color, age, sexual orientation, marital status, and we still had genuine respect and affection for each other. And even though we disagreed, the community, the Manhattan community elected all of us and I feel we served them well. And that, that's very unusual because when people think about Kansas, they don't think about diversity. And we are as diverse as a commission can be. So I know things can happen when people work well together. This afternoon, there was talk about our legislators going to a civil discourse, something in Wichita or Washburn or somewhere of that sort. But either way, I think if they just watch our meetings, it's very evident how that occurs. It was never about a short meeting. We always had thorough discussions and I think we added to the discussion every single time. I would like to welcome Commissioner Mark Hattasol as well as Commissioner Aaron Esterbrook and look forward to working with you. Both of them have experience as elected official, as on the Board of Education, as well as on the previous city commission before us, so they are not new to this arena. And I'm sure they are easy to work with and collaborate and will bring a different perspective to the table as well. Manhattan has a lot to be proud of. And as I travel across the state of Kansas, I hear a constant and consistent theme among other communities. When I say I'm from Manhattan, often I hear people talk about their wonderful memories of their visits to Manhattan or a son or a daughter or a relative that has attended Kansas State University or is currently attending Kansas State University. And I'm often asked, how does Manhattan do it? How do you have a vibrant downtown? How did you make change, changes happen in your park and your pools and have a wonderful recreational centers? How do you keep Manhattan such an inviting, welcoming community? And the response is easy for me. It's the people, the city staff and city commissioners and the community at large. Separately, Manhattan would not be where we are if we all worked in different tangents and had our own agendas. But because we continually discuss how to improve and invest back in our communities, we tend to thrive. And this doesn't just happen on Tuesday nights, as was mentioned before. We work so many hours even before our meeting starts. We go to so many meetings, work with so many advisory boards and respect the decisions the advisory boards also bring to the table. And in spite of the challenges put forth by the state and federal budgets, we find ways to move forward. We've utilized such things as the community improvement district for the Manhattan Town Center, the transient guest tax to improve our Manhattan convention, convention center expansion, the TIF district for Aggieville Business District, as well as downtown. We use several sales tax initiatives to help our parks and rec- of their visits to Manhattan, or a son, or a daughter, or a relative that has attended Kansas State University, or is currently attending Kansas State University. And I'm often asked, how does Manhattan do it? How do you have a vibrant downtown? How did you make changes happen in your park and your pools and have wonderful recreational centers? How do you keep Manhattan such an inviting, welcoming community? And the response is easy for me. It's the people, the city staff and city commissioners, and the community at large. Separately, Manhattan would not be where we are if we all worked in different tangents and had our own agendas. But because we continually discuss how to improve and invest back in our communities, we tend to thrive. And this doesn't just happen on Tuesday nights. As was mentioned before, we work so many hours even before our meeting starts. We go to so many meetings, work with so many advisory boards, and respect the decisions the advisory boards also bring to the table. And in spite of the challenges put forth by the state and federal budgets, we find ways to move forward. We've utilized such things as the Community Improvement District for the Manhattan Town Center, the transient guest tax to improve our Manhattan Convention Center expansion, the TIF District for Aggieville Business District, as well as downtown. We use several sales tax initiatives to help our parks and recs, so that we can add additions to our middle schools, as well as trails. And we've also did a lot for street maintenance. And this was approved by the City of Manhattan. The community signed on to it. So, the community is also saying, we need to do things better. We need to keep moving forward and not be stuck in a hole just because somebody else is not taking care of things for us. We tend to work hard for the City of Manhattan. Like I said, we have a lot to be proud of, but we make tough choices, and we have a lot of tough choices ahead of us. We have a lot of projects that we're going to be discussing. We have the next work session, and we will have many more work sessions. We're going to work on timelines and figuring out a way to fund some of these initiatives. But we're not done. We're not done asking the community's input. We're not done with the conversation. Everything is not complete, just because we have signed a few contracts and we have made some movement in some areas. These are important for the City of Manhattan to grow and to thrive. In 2016, mental health was a big part of my platform. It was a big priority for me. At that time, I was seeking co-responder for RCPD and PONI mental health. We now have two co-responders. At that time, I was talking about having a crisis stabilization center. Now, we have a stabilization center that is up and running and being completely utilized. That was in 2016, excuse me, and that was founded on a lot of partnerships even at that time. I have two goals during the next year or two that I'm here on the city commission. Mental health is still a big priority. In the past few weeks, I've known at least three young men that have committed suicide. And they're not all related to me, but they're in Kansas. We have a problem. And even though we have a crisis stabilization center that's in full use, we still need to find solutions and preventive measures. That means working closely with USD 383, Kansas State University, and our businesses to figure out solutions and preventive measures, so that we are addressing the invisible scars and pains our children and our families are feeling. Sometimes they're going through life without telling anybody because of the stigma, or they're waiting too long before they take measures for resources. There is a need in our community, and it must be addressed. The university has already said there's a lot of students from the university that are utilizing our stabilization center. It's our young folks. We're thinking they're vibrant, healthy, and can do anything, and they're invincible. That's not the case, and we need to get past that. And we need to embrace them and bring them forward into our businesses. Make sure our businesses are also having a safe zone or a place for them to have a conversation, have flexible schedules. When we look at economic development funds, I think that's something we need to look at. How can we be better as far as businesses? Workforce and filling jobs is one of the key components to mental health. I think when people are being paid well, and they have a safe place to work, where they feel the freedom to be successful without being burdened with other stressors in life, they will stay in Manhattan, and we will have more people coming to Manhattan. We will be working closely with education entities such as the Manhattan Area Technical College, Flint Hills Job Corps, Kansas State University, Manhattan Christian College, USD 383, Fort Riley, and other institutions to fill the jobs. We need people to come to Manhattan and to stay in Manhattan. And for that to happen, we need to work closely with everybody. One of the privileges I have is being on the city commission and in the mayor position is also to put people on advisory boards. We talked about how many people it takes to run communities such as the City of Manhattan. We want all of you to be involved. We are looking people from diverse communities, diverse backgrounds, different ages. You have a place to serve in the City of Manhattan. I'm honored to be the mayor of Manhattan once again, and it is a thrill to be here on the shoulders of many, and I hope many more follow in our footsteps. It's a hard job, but I think everybody's capable of participating in this process, and hopefully, we will reach our hand out to others to pull them up and be on our advisory boards, as well as serve on city commissions in the future. Thank you once again, and I look forward to serving. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back at eight, uh, what time? About eight o'clock. Thank you. Okay. We are back in session. We will be doing the consent agenda for the new business. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
Yep, I have a few. I want to ask you a question about item I, which is this, you know, letter of support, which is on the consent agenda. We haven't previously reviewed it because of the circumstances it was in. But what I want to know is this, you know, I have no problem supporting it, but it looks like it could commit us to as much as $120,000. But I guess if they get the grant, that would come back before the commission for a vote?
It's my understanding that your additional financial input right now, this is just somewhat of a pledge for the grant. The grant agreement, we would have a funding agreement with ATA. I think the ATA would actually be the grant recipient.
Right.
But we would have to have an agreement with the ATA to provide part of the local match.
So, that'll come back to us again.
That would come back to the commission.
Okay. So, I'm all right with that then, with item I. I want to just mention item C, because Economy Carpentry won the bid, and my sister owns part of that, so I won't be voting on that. I reclusive myself on item C, just to avoid any possibility of conflict of interest. And then, I've got some issues with the, you know, item E and G on here, which are dues payments, which I've never been happy with, because they seem to be exorbitant. I don't know if the city has any ability to negotiate those lower. But particularly on item E, which concerns me, is the National League of Cities. And we're using $7,000 from the water fund, wastewater fund, and stormwater fund in combination to pay for dues to the National League of Cities. And every year, you know, we get a briefing that says, hey, we got to raise water rates, stormwater rates, because we don't have enough money to pay for the infrastructure. Maybe we don't have enough money to pay for the infrastructure, because we're paying for dues to the National League of Cities with the stormwater fund. And I just don't support that at all. I think we got to draw a line on using these stormwater funds for everything but stormwater. And I see that as a source. It seems to be an easy source to make it up and soften the blow on the mill levy. But I'm not going to support this, because I don't want to see those water funds put on there. And then, the other thing I find of interest is item G, which is the Flint Hills Regional Council. And the dues for the regional council are almost equal to what we pay the MPO. And the MPO is required, you know, it's $32,000 there. This is $31,000. And I think there's an overlap in effort there. And then, the MPO is necessary, and the regional council's not. And I'm not sure we're getting a return on the money. So, I'm going to vote no on item G and on item E.
Public comment about the items on the consent agenda? Seeing as there's no public comment on consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. I would also comment that I wholeheartedly support the Flint Hills Regional Council and the work they do in this seven-county area that supports Fort Riley, and the work that, the necessary work that must be done there, as well as the interaction between the cities and the counties. It's an opportunity to work together and get to know each other, so that when there's something like a BRAC, or a Fort Riley, or a legislative item, we know each other well enough to call and build support for something that's very necessary. And certainly, I support the Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization and the need for that. I would rather have the city manager perhaps talk about, when's concerned about E? I suppose it needs a second before we talk.
I'll second it. I would just say, I think Commissioner Butler misspoke a little about, the item E is the Kansas League of Municipalities, not the National League of Cities. But, and part of the philosophy of utilizing different funds is that the league works on a lot of legislative issues. You know, one of the issues we talked about, I think Representative Carolyn talked about at her committee, and was going to work a lot on water. And so, I think there is justification to use a variety of funds, because they're advocating on behalf of city in all the functions that we provide. And so, that's the basis for pulling that out of a variety of different sources. So, they do provide a lot of training, not only for elected officials, but for staff, and they do quite a bit of legislative advocacy. We mentioned there's a Local Government Day coming up towards the end of the month for that, so just...
And Ron, they just recently, well, not recently, but about two or three years ago, they increased it, right? The dues to be much less?
They did change the due structure, which unfortunately put a little bit more burden on the first-class cities. They changed that to be that. I think there's, I want to say there's 500 cities in Kansas, I believe, that, I don't know if they're all members of the league, but there's a due structure, and it's based on per capita and population.
I think one of the things I feel with the League of Kansas Municipalities is how much we utilize it ourselves. I know Linda utilizes it quite often, and I've been to a few of their sessions, as well as went to their website for several references. But we need to see how practical it is for us, or if we are going to pay membership anyway, we need to utilize them even more and make sure they're pushing forward what are legislative items, so that we are fruitful, such as online sales tax, or the property let, or whatever it might be, that we have those conversations. Because I, too, feel sometimes we're not getting a very responsive answer, because they have to cover so many communities. And even though we're paying such a large chunk of the, I think $25,000 is quite a bit of money, that we should get something in return, instead of just paying a due. I think we need to account for what we are getting in return. So, maybe if we can somehow keep track of that, whether it's briefings or reports, whatever it might be, to see if it is worth the money, and what we can ask more of them if we need to.
I think in the summer, Bernie Hayen and I, at least once and maybe twice, went to Topeka to work on legislative priorities at the League of Kansas Municipalities. And there was a special emphasis on one session on there was a special emphasis on one session on finance and training. New representatives from any, any community that's a member can attend those. They don't always, but it seems to me that some really experienced people are there, and some brand-new-for-the-first-time people are. So there's a good mix of people there, and you get more acquainted with what the issues are statewide. So it's not just in our little cocoon, so that it makes you think in a broader way. So it is valuable.
Okay, with that...
I understand, you know, all the reasons for it, but I'm, I'm just for, you know, lean management, cutting all the waste out of here, and I'm tired of seeing our water bills go up. And I know you got justifications for that, but I want to see us just put a moratorium on using those water funds for anything except the Water Department. And then we will not have to raise the water bill every year. That's a hidden tax for me. And it's time to start, you know, really crunching these numbers, you know, on here. And if, and if we're getting, you know, $25,000 worth of return from the League of Kansas Municipalities, fine, demonstrate it. And the same thing from the regional council. You know, if it's 31,000, where's the 31,000 coming back to Manhattan? We'd be better off put that in a water fund.
I just wanted to speak on this, the League of Municipalities issue. The, right here in our packet, it says they testified 55 times on 160 bills and reviewed 600 different bills that go through the legislature. If we want to talk about cost savings, if we had to do that, if we had, and if we missed a bill, which things do get inserted all of the time, that would cost us dramatically, potentially. So I, I think that it is a resource that is valuable, and I, I understand your frustration with the stormwater, but not doing this also would probably cost us a lot more.
And it's just to keep staying informed, whether it's with Dick Carter, or whatever it is, whatever resources we have. Any other questions or comments? Was a motion made?
Yes.
Okay. And seconded. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
I'm going to reclusive myself on item C, and no on item E and G, and yes on the rest.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes, on all of them.
Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of item C, which carries four to zero to one, and items E and G, which carry three to two.
I don't think so. I don't, I wasn't paying attention.
Four, four to one, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I should listen. Okay, we're going to move on to the general agenda. Consider a request for qualifications for South Manhattan Avenue Storm Sewer Interceptor improvements. And our presenter is Brian Johnson, our city engineer.
Downtown master plan project was completed in 2014. That master plan identified 14 major CIP goals for the downtown east and west watershed. The goal of that master plan is to reduce flooding in and around the downtown area, including Points, Blumont, Carney, north and south Fourth Street, north and south Third Street, and north Manhattan Avenue, including Aggieville and downtown. So what is the downtown watershed? It's actually shown here on this PowerPoint. It actually extends all the way out to Bill Schneider Family Stadium. So it's actually one of our largest watersheds. Water that falls in that watershed eventually has to get through nine different locations on the levee. So all of that water eventually is funneled down to nine specific locations, and I got a slide on that here in just a minute. But you can see from the slide, obviously, we have quite a bit of water comes down north Manhattan, down Blumont, down 12th Street, Points Avenue. Several of those projects are already under design, or one of them is actually going to begin construction. It was awarded a construction contract on December 17th. We'll talk about that here in just a minute also. So where does all this water go to, now that we know where it comes from? It actually goes through these different points on the levee. Now, out of all of these points that are shown on the levee, there's actually about four of them that do the majority of the work. The one at South Manhattan, the one at Casement and Hayes, the one at Points, and then the one at the mall underneath the K-177 Bridge. Those are the workhorses of those penetrations through the levee. So what is the master plan? What's it look like? Well, this is the master plan document identifies 14 separate CIP projects, total of about $70 million in stormwater improvements. We have begun construction on CIP One, that was awarded back in December. CIP Two is part of a Betterment Agreement with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. CIP Three is actually under design now, it's about half-designed. We anticipate a construction contract late in this year. CIP Four is the McCall Road area, and we'll talk a little bit about why we're jumping from three to five in just a second. CIP Five is what we're here to talk about tonight, and that's this interceptor trunk main. Obviously, it starts at Points, runs down, and goes through the levee and through a sluice gate down here. But you can see there's an eventual goal to get up to Anderson and get up to 14th Street, where we have a significant amount of overflow as we jump through watersheds. So what is CIP Number One? This project actually was awarded back in December, should start construction here in the next 30 days. It's a trunk main that picks up water down south Sixth Street, Points Avenue, all the way back to the junior high. So the goal of that project is to collect stormwater overflow that comes down Points, get it into a pipe system, start collecting water from Pierre, Colorado, Yuma, Fairlane, Fort Riley Boulevard, all of those locations, collect it, and get it down and through the levee on south Potawatomi Avenue, south Fourth Street. CIP Number Two, this is our Betterment Agreement with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. This project will actually enlarge the existing gate well through the levee. It'll build a new gate well with new sluice gates, new flap gates. Really, it'll update that gate well that was built in the early 1960s. This master plan actually called for three eight-by-eight reinforced concrete boxes with gates. After we've gone through design with the Corps of Engineers, we can actually reduce that now to two eight-by-eight boxes. Working with the Corps of Engineers and their design team, we actually eliminated one of the boxes, saved several hundred thousand dollars in that construction project. CIP Three is actually currently under design with a local consultant. It's about 50% designed, and the goal of this project is to widen that existing ditch that runs between the lime pits and then the properties to the east. It'll start down here at IHOP, where that existing box was just installed to a KDOC grant a few years ago. Carries that water all the way north up underneath Hayes, and then to, into project number two. Goal of this project is to eliminate overflows that happen in the lime pit area. We flood into our lime pits quite frequently in about a two-year storm event. Also, it's to regrade and recarry a lot of the water that gets onto the pretty ditch, carry it north, get it through the sluice gate, that pretty ditch, the Walmart ditch, the TCB ditch, whatever we want to call it, significantly undersized. So then we go to CIP Number Five, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. That's this large box structure that starts at Points, runs south through the levee, down into Wildcat Creek. So CIP Number Five, the project was approved in the 2020 Stormwater CIP, budget's about $9 million. All project costs are budgeted in the stormwater fund. They're in our spreadsheets. Our payments through the stormwater fund have been calculated, and they're in the spreadsheet accounted for. It's likely that construction won't start until 2022, which is why we're here to talk tonight, so we can get this project kicked off. There's several permitting agencies I've got to work with, including the Union Pacific Railroad, Army Corps of Engineers, Kansas Department of Transportation. So I have the trifecta of permitting I have to get through. That's probably going to take me 12 to 18 months, which is why I want to get started. Again, construction likely not until 2022, so our first payments would be probably 2025, 2026. And those payments will be accounted for in that stormwater spreadsheet that you'll see towards the end of the year when we talk about stormwater rates. So the question for you tonight, the action items, authorize Public Works to issue an RFQ for the South Manhattan Storm Sewer Interceptor Project, and then also appoint one commissioner to serve on that selection committee. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Questions for Brian?
Yes.
So when you talk about the sluice gates and the flaps and the getting through the levee...
Yes.
There's no concern that if the Kansas River is high, I, what's, other places we have pumps to pump the water over when the water level's high in the river. Is this some kind of a one-way valve thing, where water can go out but it can't come back, or is that how those...
So there's actually two things. When you go through a federally sponsored levee, you have to have both a flap gate, which opens and closes. You also have to have a sluice gate. You have to have a double penetration or a double security with that sluice gate that actually cranks down and closes. This station already has a pump station at it.
Okay.
South Manhattan already has one. We're going to modify that a little bit, just based on flows, and we'll go through that with the design process. But there's already a pump station at that location.
And then when the water in Kansas River is high, that pump station will kick in?
Correct. Yeah, so the sluice gate closes, we get a rain, the water fills up inside the system. There's a float inside that pump. Once it gets so high, the pump automatically comes on.
Other questions for Brian? Public comment? Seeing no public comment, any additional comments or questions?
At the briefing session earlier, I expressed interest in serving as the commissioner on this project. I'm interested in all things flood, so it makes sense. And I am interested in trying just to be a part of the solutions for the community about when, with these issues we have. And it's inevitable that we have them, given our location and surrounded by rivers and low points. So it's to be expected, but it is still tragic when we have floods. So I'd like to help, be a part of it anyway.
Well, this is just one, one small component to a larger picture, so hopefully, we are going in the right direction, and it's an expensive one, but it's definitely an investment we need to make, so... Anybody want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we authorize the city administration to seek proposals for professional services for the South Manhattan Avenue Storm Sewer Interceptor Improvements Project, and appoint City Commissioner Morse to serve on the selection committee.
I'll second.
Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you, everyone, for attending, and we are adjourned for this evening.